Good afternoon. Welcome everyone to the January 25, 2024 briefing session. Today, this is actually the second briefing for our regular meeting, which is next week on February 1, 2024. And I have been, sound has been off, apologize. And so we have one discussion item today, which is an audit committee report for Commissioner Linville, which we could do now or go ahead and turn it over. Do you want to go ahead and make your report, Commissioner Linville?
The Audit Committee did meet and met with the Finance Director and Internal Auditor and just went over some things in regard to the audit and also with the Internal Auditor, not new with the county, but he's been on board for six, eight months as an Internal Auditor, and they give us a work plan, schedule that he's got. And from the looks of that, it looks like he's going to be busy for a while, so we won't have to worry about him having anything to do. So Board Members, Committee Members, have anything to say?
I thought it was a good meeting. I really appreciate the work that Chris Frong, our new Internal Auditor is doing. And you're right, he's going to be busy.
Thank you.
All right, we're ready now to review the items for next week's regular meeting for the briefing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, Board Members and staff and guests. We do have the detailed review today on the items for the next week's meeting. I'll just turn it over to Chris to handle the first two items, which are both public hearing on zoning petitions. So while you're pulling up, I will read it. It says, the first one is a public hearing on a zoning petition of Cade Six Holdings LLC from AG to LIL, properties located on the north side of NC 66 between Creekwood Forest Drive and Moore Farm Road, zoning docket F-1635.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good afternoon, Members of the Board of County Commissioners. Yes, this is a request to rezon approximately 10 acres from AG to limited industrial, limited use, or as the county terms it in the ordinance, limited use, no site plan. This is the subject property shown on the countywide Legacy Growth Management Area Plan. It is located within GMA 4, down in the southeastern portion of Forsyth County, across the street from some property that's within the City of High Point's jurisdiction through annexation. This is the subject property highlighted in yellow. Again, it's on the west side of Highway 66, again, close to the City of High Point, and its previously, its previous use was as a life care community slash nursing care institution, which I believe has been vacant for a number of years, at least over a decade, by some of the information that we received from the neighbors. Subject property, again, outlined in yellow on the countywide aerial imagery, you do see where the existing nursing care institution is located on the property. And this also provides a good shot of the industrial slash warehousing development within the City of High Point. That's the Ralph Lauren Warehouse Distribution Facility that's within Forsyth County's jurisdiction, but within the City of High Point. Subject property shown on the Southeast Forsyth County Area Plan Update. It recognizes the institutional use that was present and carries that forward, which is the common practice of most area plans. Given the limited nature and scope of this request, we feel like it's not going to provide, be much more impactful than what the existing institutional use is. So we feel like it is consistent with the recommendation of the plan. These are looking at some site photos, looking north along Highway 66. The subject property is to the left, and this is looking south along 66. The subject property is to the right. This is looking at the subject property, again, the abandoned nursing care institution. This is looking from the site across High Point, not High Point Road, 66, but in the background, you can see the top, the tops of the Ralph Lauren Warehousing Industrial Property there within the City of High Point. The request, again, as I mentioned, we feel like is consistent with the recommendations of the Southeast Forsyth County Area Plan Update and with Legacy 2030. Proposed district request is compatible with the surrounding residential agricultural and industrial land uses, given the limited nature of the request. And that entails just requesting two uses, Services B and Nursery, Lawn and Garden Supply Store, Retail. We have proposed a condition that would limit the size of the sign if one is desired, and also prohibited electronic messaging board signs. This was heard by the Planning Board at their December 2023 public hearing. There were no speakers in opposition, and following the public hearing, the Planning Board did vote unanimously to recommend approval to the Commissioners. At our last briefing session, I believe Commissioner Bessie asked about the subcategory uses of Services B, and I did ask the county clerk to send that out, and it's my understanding that she has. So if there are specific questions related to that, I did confirm with our senior zoning inspector that those, while there is an outdoor storage component associated with those, there is not an outdoor activity components. In other words, you couldn't be welding and working on things outside unless it was kind of a one-off. It would not be a consistent, you couldn't have a, you couldn't run a welding operation and do that outside under Services B. It would basically be storage.
If you go back to the previous slide, so the primary anticipated usage is a nursery, lawn and garden supply store, retail, yes. And did the petitioner specifically request Services B, or were they asking for something in particular in, in connection with the nursery, lawn and garden supply store?
It's my understanding that they operate a landscaping company, and as a result, they definitely need to use the Services B, but they also plan to have a retail component where folks can come there and buy landscaping supplies, whether it be plants, mulch, rock, timbers, those kind of things. So they ask for both, because again, the person that is doing this is a landscaper, so they need to use Services B, but they also want to offer a retail component where folks can also come there and buy things that they have in bulk.
The, the thing that I think would concern the residents if they were aware of it, that came in and spoke in favor, would probably be the catch-all, Services B, you know, category Establishments from SIC 7699 primarily engaged in providing repair and other services to businesses and, to a lesser extent, individuals that by their, by the nature of their operation could impact adjoining property due to noise, odor, vibration, and/or air and water pollution. Uses include repair or servicing of large or heavy machinery, such as engines and appliances, and welding, blacksmith or gun shops, and septic tank or sewer cleaning services, but not to include agriculture and farm equipment, industrial truck repair, motorcycle repair. So there's a lot of room for some highly impactful uses under Service B, unless you say, you know, Services B except for 7699.
And obviously, I can't answer that myself. I believe that is something that, you know, you could have that conversation with the petitioner whenever they are present next week. And if they're willing to further limit that use, it's something that has been done in the past. I know, obviously, from the city council perspective, you're used to, there were some times when under Services A, there was some folks that did not like the used tattoo parlors. And that was specifically asked to be removed from the permitted SIC or NAICS list. So it has been done. It would just have to be proffered, agreed upon verbally, and then eventually in writing. And I'm sorry, I was turned around and looked at Gordon, but that's not Gordon. But anyway, that's something that, that could be achieved next week, and I'll certainly ask that, have staff reach out and ask if that's something that they would be agreeable to, so that they at least can think about it between now and next week.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Any further questions for Chris about this item?
The second zoning matter is a public hearing on zoning petition of Ram Real Estate LLC from RS 30 and RS 40 to LBS. Properties located on the east side of Germanton Road between Irene Lane and Oak Trail Lane, zoning docket F-1636.
And good afternoon again. This is, as the County Manager mentioned, a request to rezon from RS 30 and RS 40 to The, this is the subject property shown on the Legacy Countywide Growth Management Area Plan. It is located within GMA 5, the rural area. This is the subject property highlighted in yellow on the planometric map. You see it's located there, just off the screen to the south would be the interchange with the Northern Beltway and Germanton Road. This is the subject property outlined in yellow on the countywide aerial imagery. This is the subject property shown on the Rural Hall Area Plan Update, which was completed in the late 20 teens. It does recognize the existing residential character of the area and recommends that this area remain as residential at this time. These are just some images, looking south, that bottom right image is looking south, the subject property is on the, I'm sorry, bottom left image, the, that is looking south, the subject property is on the left. The bottom right image is looking north, the subject property is on the right, and that is looking across from the subject property to the property across the street or on the west side of Germanton. This is looking east into the subject property from Germanton Road. This is looking northeast and east at the neighboring residential properties. This is the existing public street, which the developer is proposing to improve to the public street standard with curb and gutter and asphalt. And that is shown where my cursor is. This is the site plan. You, it proposes a retail store building. It's, when we get to elevations, you will see this is a Dollar General proposal, but it's proposing to have parking along Germanton Road and along, I believe that's entitled Lyle, is the name of that substandard right of way that they're proposing to improve, with parking in between those rights of way and the building, and then the building in the southeastern corner of the site. These are the elevations that they submitted. These elevations do comply with the retail standards as far as materials. That was a condition that was added at the Planning Board, but it is included with your, with what the petitioner has already signed, agreed, agreeing to just screening the HVAC equipment from all four sides, review from the public right of way. This request is, it was felt that this request was inconsistent with the recommendations of the Rural Hall Area Plan Update and with Legacy 2030. The request is not within the serviceable area of Forsyth County. It's located within GMA 5. It's presumed to remain rural. No commercial zoning is located within a quarter mile of the subject property. The closest commercial zoning is to the northwest, which was a non-conforming convenience store that was rezoned probably 12 to 15 years ago, but as I mentioned last time, we have had some compliance issues with that site. It's currently being used, I believe, as an outdoor flea market. What this request would allow is suburban development patterns to encroach into the rural area of Forsyth County. You know, keep in mind, I believe we did discuss last week that we are in the process of doing the Forward 2045 Comprehensive Plan Update, where we will be looking at the Growth Management Area concept. And as the Beltway has been built, and there are interchanges here, we do see that that is a potential area for additional commercial service and economic development opportunities, but we feel like that it's premature at this point. And that is what the Planning Board felt also when they held the public hearing back in December. There were no speakers that spoke in opposition. Following the public hearing, the Planning Board did vote denial by a vote of five to two, and the predominant thought of the Planning Board was that the request was premature until Forward 2045 is complete, and, and further that there's a completion of the parcel specific recommendations. Again, because currently this is recommended, it's in GMA 5, and it's recommended to be single-family residential. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Chris?
Chris, was, this was decided, it is a spot zone?
That I cannot answer, because I believe, I'm not sure if the county attorney is prepared to answer that. I know that, that was something that Gordon was going to look into after last week. I have not seen that if it was so decided.
I think Gordon did send you a spot zoning letter, and Andrew Marshall from his office is sitting in for him today. This may be your first or second, he hadn't been here a whole lot with us, but Andrew spends most of his days trying to keep the sheriff along the right line. So did you, were you going to talk to the spot zoning, Andrew?
There is a, Fred Johnson, our office, got an opinion on it. There is what is believed to be a significant threat of there being spot zoning, and that it, it would be illegal, a pretty, pretty good chance of that.
Thank you.
Can I ask this question? I assume the other, the site that's the other business zone article that was a convenience store that's now the outdoor flea market, I assume 15 years ago roughly when that was approved, it would obviously have been subject to the spot zoning request too at that point, because it, it's more of a spot zone than this one is, because there was no bypass, no anything, no nothing, right out in the middle of nowhere. And I suspect it was not challenged.
It definitely was not challenged, now whether or not the request, you know, whether or not the question was asked at that point, I'm not sure either. I do know, obviously, it was an existing commercial business, and I'm not sure if that influenced the opinion as to whether or not it would or would not be considered spot zoning if challenged, but obviously, it was approved as a rezoning.
That particular one, Mr. Chairman, would that have been an amendment to the current zoning that was there? Because that, that store place would have come under grandfather before zoning, because I, and it seemed like to me, it may have had something to do with the gas pumps. I don't know whether it was some, I just can't remember, whether it was some before that, but it seemed like it was some amendment to something they wanted to do different than what they were already doing.
Luckily, the county attorneys have determined that the old business centers, internet sweepstakes operations are not legal within the county, but that was what they wanted to do. They had a convenience store, and they wanted to add that business sweepstakes operation, and it went through a process, and it got rezoned because it was residential. They wanted to add a use which wasn't permitted, so they had to actually go through the act and have it rezoned. It's been closed for a long time, and hasn't, it hasn't been that in probably a dozen years, but I think that was the impetus that made them come through and ask for the rezoning.
Any additional questions? All righty, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Agenda Item 3 is a resolution extending a recruitment retention bonus program for law enforcement detention center staff with Forsyth County Sheriff's Office. Shannon Hutchins, our amazing HR Director, will come up and brief this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So in October 2022, the Board approved sign-on and retention bonuses for full-time employees permanently assigned to the detention center and detention officer certified positions. Sign-on bonuses were funded through December 31 of 2023. So the resolution that you have extends the sign-on bonus program through the end of this fiscal year, June 30, 2024. All full-time employees hired into detention certified positions between January 1, 2024, and June 30, 2024, enter active on payroll at the time of the scheduled payment, would be eligible to receive the bonus. And I'll be happy to take any questions.
Maybe two. The first one is, is that, obviously, any person that's hired between now, basically the end of the year, they would be eligible for, because the, the retention bonus, of this signing bonus, would actually be paid out in, what is it, three payments, four payments?
It's three increments, mhm, at their six month, 12 month, and 18 month.
Yeah, so, so the commitment for that would be into the next fiscal year also. I don't think it would be very much, probably, but there's, it's not just this year, it's, it's setting an obligation for FY 25, actually, and 26.
It does roll into the next fiscal year, yes.
Yeah, I guess both of them would be paid in the next fiscal year, both, both the remaining bonuses, if they continue working.
That's correct, yeah.
They would both be into the next. And I guess this, my second question really gets at how well our, do we think our retention is bonus working, and how, and I have heard that we are hiring and have hired successfully more detention officers. So do you, do you know what that number kind of looks like?
I do, so their vacancies for detention, as of this morning, was eight, they have 80 vacancies in detention, 80. But they have 50 candidates, approximately 50 candidates, that are somewhere within their process, their hiring process, whether that's, you know, background or further, further on in the process. So they do have, they're actively working about 50.
Interesting. And as I recall, when we started this, we had about 100 vacancies.
That's right, yes. It was over 100, actually, I think at one point.
110, if I remember.
Yeah.
The last question, which I'll keep asking questions, but I would like to ask that, and this is just your speculation, why do you think we've all of a sudden had this flurry of activity and 50 people in the queue, so to speak, somewhere in the process? Would you care to offer an opinion about why that might be the case?
So I, I think my opinion would be that a culmination of efforts, board-approved initiatives, the Board has done quite a bit over the last year, year and a half really, for detention specifically. I'll also say that the Sheriff's Office has done a really great job of putting out recruitment materials, getting, you know, officers in the, the community for recruitment events, doing their own recruitment events. I recently just saw some commercials on WXIR, WGHP1 for the Sheriff's Office, really, really good marketing tools. So I think it's a culmination of efforts.
And we did, I, I think the jail has adopted, made a shift change issue?
They made a shift change, so they, the Sheriff's Office went back to permanent shifts for detention. The detention center went back to permanent shifts on December 9.
Interesting. Okay, well, that's, that's very good. Any other questions for Shannon?
Yes, I do. Shannon, thank you again for the information. I have a question relative to the Human Resources Department for the Sheriff's Department. Can you talk to me or tell me how we in our HR department collaborate with the Sheriff's HR Department, and how can we help?
Yeah, absolutely. So we, we work very closely with the HR staff at the Sheriff's Office. I'll say that a lot of what they do is processing of applications and applicants and going through, they have a multi-step process, hiring process. So we definitely collaborate with them. We are in regular communication with them about various things, various HR things, but we work very closely with them on the, on the daily. various HR things, but we work very closely with them on the, on the daily. I will say that recently, within the last six months, we've had a, a focus group with detention center command staff as well as, you know, myself and Deputy County Manager Chantel Robinson. And so, I feel like a lot of progress came out of that and the sheriff has been very, you know, receptive to, you know, our feedback and, yeah.
So, my question is just minimal concern and it's regarding the PCN process. I don't know if you guys have access to that, and I know that it transitions from the Sheriff's Department, but in some way, could there be some collaboration so there's additional oversight in terms of background checking, if you understand what I mean?
We can definitely reach out to them and have some conversations about that, yes.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Shannon.
Mr. Manager, before we go forward, would you go back to EMS matter?
Mm-hmm.
Sex reading.
Mr. Manager, that's at the end of the agenda.
Yeah.
It's the last item.
Yeah, we'll pick that. That's actually the very last item, so I hadn't quite got there yet.
Okay.
Yep.
Do it then.
All right. All right, so we've got minutes. Item four, approval minutes from the meeting of January 18th. Those are going out?
They will go out tomorrow.
Out tomorrow, so keep an eye out for that. We have one budget and finance item. Nicole Pritty is going to come, from the Public Health Department is going to come up and present an amendment to the fiscal year 2024 budget ordinance appropriates $150,000 from the state. So, Nicole.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Nice to see everybody. Yes, this is a request to appropriate $150,000 from North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services to the Health Department Environmental Health Program, specific to the vector section of environmental health. The goal would be to renovate old mosquito control equipment, purchase new equipment, and create a method to track mosquito populations in the county. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Please.
What is the equipment that would be involved here?
There's quite a bit of equipment, surprisingly, or maybe not surprisingly. There's a truck that has a sprayer on it that, that does need some updating. They have, I believe, like a, not a golf cart, but a, like a four-wheel piece of equipment so that they can get out into areas that are difficult to reach by foot to do their mosquito tracking and monitoring. And, and then, of course, all of the chemicals that they use.
I, I was under the impression that that sort of broadcast pesticide spraying approach went out decades ago.
They are still spraying currently adulticide for adult mosquitoes.
Can you give us a little more background information on that, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We'll actually get somebody from Environmental Health in, Chantel, to kind of talk through that, that protocol.
Yeah, we've had, we've had a couple of presentations by the PhD scientist that actually works on the mosquito part. And I didn't realize, but we're like a leader in the state and region in mosquito management issues. So, so it's great that for, maybe he would come and give us another update. I, I was certainly impressed first time I heard it.
Yeah, and, and actually, he's putting together some kind of a recap of 2023 mosquito work and I've seen some preliminary.
That'd be great. He could come next week and tell us that. That'd be great.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I have to confess that, that my knowledge of the issue dates back to when I was a kid back in, in the, in the Paleolithic period. And at that time, what I was dealing, what we had in Hickory were the old-fashioned fogger trucks that would run up and down neighborhood streets fogging with DDT. And, uh,
Yeah, I don't think we're doing that anymore.
No, I know you're not doing that. But I, I would appreciate more familiarity with what the program currently does do. For, for a lot of, a lot of pesticides is actually biocide. I want to be, I would like some reassurance that we're, you know, using only specifically targeted chemicals that will go after mosquitoes but not go after butterflies and et cetera.
Yeah, absolutely.
Honeybees, what have you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole.
All right. We have a couple of grant matters, and Mike Bowman actually is going to tee up, I think, both of these. Item six is a resolution authorizing submission of an application to the North Carolina Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services Soil and Water Conservation Division to apply for and accept if awarded a Streamflow Rehabilitation Assistance Program grant. And then item, so, okay, so Kim Gressley as well. So, y'all have at it.
We are here. So, good afternoon, Commissioners. We have two resolutions before you. The first one has to do with the strap grant, and I know that you had some information from us to read about the Streamflow Rehabilitation Assistance Program. And if you have any questions, that's what I have Mike here for.
Any questions for Mike? Straight forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And so, the second resolution has to do with our VAD program and getting some money from the state to purchase more of our lovely and beautiful VAD sites. Any questions?
Questions? Good, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Very good. We have three contractual matters. Item eight is a resolution authorizing an execution agreement between Forsyth County and Benty Incorporated to provide licensing software for the Forsyth County Department of Social Services, Family and Children's Division, and Adrian Turner is going to come up and review this.
Good evening. We are requesting a resolution authorizing Forsyth County DSS to enter into a sole source provider agreement with Benty for licensing software for our MAP training. Benty is currently, the stand-up time is about three months from implementation. There are several other counties within the state that are currently using Benty for their foster pair recruitment. This could be used for 100% of state adoption promotion funds. And one of the counties who said that the only thing they did was implement Benty differently, and they went from a MAP class of five families to a class with almost 20 families. I mean, as you all know, we have about 216 youth in care and we only have around 25 licensed foster homes with Forsyth County. So, many of our children are placed with other licensing agencies. So, it'd be great to be able to have this equipment so that we can license more foster families and keep more of our families within Forsyth County DSS.
Good. Question, questions for Adrian?
Thank you.
I, I just maybe at one, I just, I did read the particulars on that contract. I understand it's a sole source and nobody else is doing this in the world. Correct?
Correct.
Just wanted to make sure, in the world, okay?
Well, I guess, that we're aware of, yes.
The thing that struck me, though, it's got a built-in 5% increase every year on their, I mean, built in already on, on, on the first three-year contract. And that just struck me as a, perhaps a little high for a maintenance, basically a maintenance agreement on that. And it will be a forever issue. When it runs out, they're gonna, they'll probably want to sell, they'll have other sole source modules to sell, et cetera. But, but that success rate is, I mean, that would be, it also sounds like it might be worth it, so I,
Yes, I agree.
I appreciate you saying that, but I just had to kind of think, kind of digest sole source 5% guaranteed increases and.
Yes, and I will say it's going to be very easy to use, and we can have a direct link from our website. And also, families, if you decide at 2:00 in the morning that you're interested in fostering, you can do the application right then versus having to call someone or leave a message and wait for them to call you back. You can already have your information in the system right in. It takes all your information. They can take a picture of their cell phone, of the documents they need, and upload it directly into Benty.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Adrian. Agenda item nine is resolution authorizing execution agreement to the agreement with Shellco LLC for the Forsyth County Agricultural Park Complex project. James Anderson is going to come up and review this.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The item before you is to approve the design build amendment for the grading phase of the Ag Park Project. Just a quick review of the project history. The Board did select the Rolling Hill Site in Tobacco Ville in 2022, and then Shellco was selected to provide design build services at the December 1st, 2022 meeting. The overall budget for the project is $16.5 million, and that's funded from a mixture of bonds, Pago, and state funds. The image here on the right shows a general overview of the area with the park property highlighted in red. The kind of line that goes here through the middle, that's the railroad that separates the, the site into the north and south half, and will be developing the park on the north half of the site. So, the overall site plan has an entry access road coming off of Doral Drive, coming into where the corporate extension building with a meeting and exhibit hall will be situated. And then just a little further into the property will be the site for the future riding arena. In the initial phase, we're planning to have an outdoor arena start. And so, this phase will include rough grading the site to a building pad-ready condition, cutting in the access road, stormwater and erosion control measures, and then also rough grading for future parking areas. So, this is another general overview of the site, kind of the concept that was put together with staff and planning. Looking at the site, the area here in yellow is the general location of where the corporate extension facility will go. The areas in kind of the orange color is where the multi-use arena will be situated and then support facilities for that. And then kind of up on the northwest portion of the track there, there's some future park areas that can include shelters, restaurants, playgrounds, things of that nature. And then the northeast portion of the property is really being looked at as, you know, having trails, whether it be equestrian, multimodal, hiking, biking, things of that sort. And so, Shellco has submitted a guaranteed maximum price proposal of $4,615,840. This does include a 3% design builder fee. The grading scope has been competitively bid, and Shellco anticipates mobilizing to the site in March, completing the grading phase in early October. And then for the overall construction of the facility and the associated work that goes along with that, Shellco anticipates submitting that guaranteed maximum price proposal to us in May. And then just some aerial images of the site. So, this is from the High Point on the site. I'm calling it Knoll. Looking back towards Doral Drive, the corporate extension facility will be situated down in this area here with the entry road coming in right through about the middle of the site here. And you can see there's a lot of scrub brush and stuff to be cleaned up on the site. And then this is a 180-degree view from that same image, looking off towards Pilot Mountain and Sour Town Mountain off in the distance. Really, really beautiful views from the top of the hill. And then this is the future park entrance off of Doral Drive. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
And doing the site work, will they be able to, that be done without moving any of the soil out or having to bring any in?
That's correct. So, they've designed it to be a balanced site, so we don't have to haul off or import any soils.
This gets us the full building pads, road bed, entrance stabilization of all the areas that have been forested. It's, it's a kind of a clean package, so we, we're ready to do what we need to do on the site. For which, for the first two phases, I guess?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the only question I had was, with a $16 million project, I was, I was probably surprised that the grading contract was basically 25%. Of course, it's a lot of grading. I mean, it is, and those pictures that certainly indicate that. It looked like on the topo part, a good bit of elevation changing too. But that, I agree with Commissioner Limmels, they're able to, I guess they're topping off the, the hilltop pieces and spreading out and able to, and then, does it also include some compacting after, after that or, or not?
So, you know, when they do the cut and fill, they'll place the fill in layers, compacting as they go for the structural fill areas.
So, it's a ready-to-build site after, basically?
Yeah, well, yeah, I got you. That's good.
Well, the, the site work, it will include putting that road going in, probably wouldn't pave it first, would it?
No, so that was actually a question that I'd had to Shellco, you know, why they didn't include the paving of the road in the, in this proposal. And the timing of having the building package ready to present is going to occur before they would get to the paving phase. And so, the paving will be included in the building phase.
And just on the picture you have up currently, it says gravel parking area. So, is that, is it, is it believed that it will be, remain gravel or?
In the beginning of the project, yes, it'll be gravel. That was a cost-saving measure that we looked at, and then also helps reduce the amount of impervious surface area that we have for runoff.
But surely, there's not an impervious surface area problem here on this site?
We're having to do stormwater retention, and there's, there's a lot of water to be, be captured on this site.
If there's a lot of land on the site.
There is.
I feel so surprised at that.
I have a question about the, the stabilization plans during the period after clearing starts and before, you know, the, the next contract is approved. You know, it's potentially quite a long time to have a lot of disturbed soil unstabilized.
So, part of what's included in this phase is to do the erosion control measures. So, that includes, you know, the for, future stormwater retention that's going to be permanent will be included in this phase.
What about, you know, the control of the fine sediment runoff? I mean, the stormwater ponds have a limited utility in, in controlling the finer particles. I hope that there are specific plans for stabilizing vegetation cover, especially, you know, during the winter that's likely to, to be between the end of the, the clearing period and the start of the construction period.
If, you know, if all goes well timing-wise, hopefully, we should be dovetailing right into starting the building construction as they're ramping down work on the grading phase. You know, that's our hope with having a, a GMP to us by May, is that, you know, really by midsummer that we will have them under contract to get started on the building itself.
I just, I've seen large sites like this do a lot of damage to the streams in a short period of time if, if you don't have well-controlled runoff. Thank you.
And one last short one. On the part of, of that particular drawing that shows asphalt paving parking area, could, could you estimate roughly how many parking spaces would be? Is that, is that just one line of parking spaces in front of the, the Ag Extension Office?
So, there's paved parking on the side here, and that'll be for staff parking with an entry coming in off the side of the building. And then the parking just to the north of the building, this is going to be the primary public parking. And then the gravel lots are really for the times when they have, you know, 300-person plus events.
So, if you're guessing number of parking spaces on the asphalt, it would be what?
I, I can't hazard a guess. I'd have to look back. I can send that to you.
Yeah, that'd be great. That's an idea. That's good, helpful. Any other questions? Thanks very much, James.
Very good. We're off and running. Agenda item 10 is a resolution authorizing a request for the North Carolina Geodetic Survey to survey, mark, and map the boundary between Forsyth and Guilford Counties. And Shelley Bowen is going to come up and review this.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So, I will share upfront that this request does have to happen, a resolution has to happen in both counties. So, Guilford County is working on theirs at the same time. So, Gordon and I have been in contact with So Gordon and I have been in contact with them. Just want to share that upfront. So this resolution, as Dudley said, is to request the North Carolina Geodetic Survey map and survey the county line. To give you guys just a little bit of background, there was a resolution passed in 1962 by the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners that established the county boundary. However, there is a lot of uncertainty that still remains for several reasons. The first being that the boundary was not surveyed by the state. It was actually surveyed by, what was it, Southern Mapping and Engineering in Greensboro. Not that that's a bad thing, but when it's not surveyed by the state, it doesn't become actually a legal boundary as state-recognized. The other reason for there being some uncertainty to the boundary is that there are references in that resolutions to physical landmarks and actual survey county line locations that no longer exist. There's kind of this famous one that us and Guilford kept going on and on about, about a beech tree. We don't know which beech tree that is. We tried, there's no way to tell. So there's a lot of landmarks that are no longer in existence. And then there was a datum shift. I promise I'll explain this as simplified as I can. The earth is not that nice sphere that you see on the globe. It kind of bows out at the equator, it's bumpy, it's lumpy. You try to put that on a map, piece of paper, whether it be digital or not, it's not perfect. We do, as Gordon says, our nice little geography map. We put it on a datum. Back when this original resolution was done, that datum was the North American Datum of 1927. Now the standard is the North American Datum of 1983, which came out in 1983. So because we have these coordinates, we don't have a perfect match to what we put down now. We have to do some additional realigning, which while not inaccurate, is not ideal. So the current boundary as it stands today is the closest it's ever been to matching with Guilford. That has a lot to do with the fact that John's group has worked very closely with the Guilford group to try to get this line as close as they possibly could. However, even though we are all working off the same coordinates, bearings, and adjusting for the datum shift that I just mentioned, we still do not 100% match. And again, that has a lot to do with sometimes these roads have been realigned. So it'll say the middle of that road, but the middle of that road in 1960 is not the middle of that road today. And I'll show you example of that. Commercial development in all sincerity is the primary motivator to engage the geodetic survey now, because originally, kind of, the two tax offices could say, you take this residential property, you know, be it that the master bedroom is there, or the majority of the property is in there, you tax them. Now that we're getting that big chunk of like, commercial development up in the triad park area, if I'm being honest, Guilford wants their chunk of it. We don't agree, so we're trying to come together and figure that out. And then obviously, it's a big deal to everyone GIS-wise and not just tax-wise, because there are the potential impacts for emergency services if we are not very closely monitoring that line, since they do not match. So, just to give you guys a little bit of background, so this is the northernmost point. Myself, John's team, and Guilford County went out, and we actually surveyed this point. Currently, it's less than a half a foot difference between what we say our county lines are. However, part of the reason we have decided that we need to involve the geodetic survey is when we went out and found all these markers, we later came back and found a very early, early plat, I think 1920s, that said, oh, all those markers are not actually on the county line, which is very kind of counterintuitive. And we'd like the state to really be the final answer to that, because it seems weird that there's a straight line of pipes and markers that aren't the county line. So, but we did find those, and we have those points to give to the state. This is actually Stegall Road. This is one of those roads where it's not as clear where the adjusted line should be. And this is the widest point between the two lines, it's approximately 13 feet. And this road is actually way up north in the county. And even though this is the widest point, we never really seem to get back together. And down at the southernmost point, we're still a foot off. This marker, myself, John, and a couple of his members of his tax mappers went out here, this one got paved over. So it is no longer there, and we could not actually locate it and GPS it. So, with all that said, with all that background information, like I mentioned at the start, both counties have to agree to get the North Carolina Geodetic Survey involved, so they both passed the resolution. The state does this at no cost to either county. A designated contact must be established, so as they're doing the survey, this takes several years. They have to be able to contact someone, get communication. For Forsyth County, that contact will actually be myself. After the survey is completed, you, the Board of Commissioners will receive a plat, both sides, Guilford and Forsyth, that they then have to agree and pass another resolution to say, yes, we agree, this is the county line. Once that's done, it actually goes to the state general. Everything is registered by the state, then they give us a copy to put in our register of deeds. And then it does effectively become the legal line. And from that point, if there ever was an argument, we would have to then reengage the state. And just for your information, the only boundary that Forsyth County has recognized by the state is actually the Aken River boundary, because it's a physical boundary. They do not recognize the other three. So we do not have any other surveyed boundaries. For the most part, I will say us and Davidson agree. So we haven't had the issues there. Not much up north, but I just wanted to let you guys know that's kind of where we stand currently. Are there any questions?
Well, you're sure that they'll do it?
No. They will.
They're in their office like this, waiting for, by the phone, for somebody to come survey.
I will say it's going to take a really long time. Dudley himself joked, he's like, so you're staying around for 23 years or so? Is that what you're doing? Perhaps. We know we're at least two to three years in the queue, so.
But it's interesting, because we do have some straight line, I mean, it's a straight shot, it's one straight line, which is interesting, and that's true across our northern and our eastern border, not so much in the southern border.
Not southern.
Just, I want your assurance that this is not a deep state plot by those imperialists in Guilford County to steal 13 feet of Forsyth County.
As far as I know, it's not.
All right. If you get any inkling of that, you let me know.
I will let you know.
See, I think you need to check the residences of anybody that works on the survey. Cannot be Forsyth or Guilford people doing it.
Make sure that they're, as far as I know, that might be why it's taken so long. As far as I know, it's only two people, and I've talked to both of those people. Might be why they're taking so long. I know.
Very good.
Are there any questions? I know it's a big headache, but yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
It's certainly different from other agenda items.
Thanks, Shaila. And I know Shaila and John have been working, a lot of folks have been working a lot on that matter. All right, we have three property items. Kirby's going to come up and review them. I'll introduce each one as he goes. Item 11 is a resolution authorizing the grant and execution of a utility easement to Duke Energy Carolina's LLC to construct and access utility infrastructure across Forsyth County own property at Craig Road.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Board. Appreciate the opportunity to bring these items before you today. As background on this item, and as the Board will probably recall, General Services, Construction Staff, Parks and Recreation are working with Bar Construction to develop the Blues Lake Park property. At a recent meeting, the Board approved an easement with Duke Energy to relocate some electrical facilities that run along Craig Road. That easement was necessary to install a right-hand turn lane into the park property. So this item is a second easement with Duke Energy, and if approved, will allow Duke Energy to install electrical infrastructure within the park property. The infrastructure will include a main underground feed as well as two pad-mounted transformers. The easement allows Duke to maintain these items into the future, but any changes, alterations, or additions would require subsequent Board approval. Happy to answer any questions the Board has.
Any questions for Kirby?
All right, great. Item 12 is also Kirby's. It's a resolution authorizing the execution of a lease agreement between Forsyth County and Memorial Industrial Community Development Corporation for lease of county-owned property located at Horizons Park at 100 Horizons Lane.
As background on this item, at its January 21st, 2021 meeting, the Board approved a three-year lease with Memorial Industrial Community Development Corporation for lease of approximately 3.6 acres of real property that's located at Horizons Park. The lease was for $1 a year, and the purpose was for providing not-for-profit educational and interactive demonstrations of farming and gardening. The intent of the lease was that the tenant would work with the North Carolina Cooperative Extension Office on development of that property, as well as the future educational programming associated with the lease. That lease is now expired, and the tenant, which is Dr. Bradshaw, desires to execute a new five-year lease for the same property. Under the proposed agreement, the rental rate would remain at $1 a year, and any money generated from the farm operation will, is required to be reinvested back into educational programming, and the tenant shall provide monthly reporting of its revenues to the North Carolina Cooperative Extension Office. And similar to the past lease, the county will pay for the tenant's use of water up to $500 a month. The tenant has requested a longer term this go-round, as its operations have sort of solidified at the property. They've got quite the operation out there, if you've driven by recently. And according to the tenant, a longer term will help them secure additional fundraising and financing for their operations. That being said, should the county's intent and desire for that property change into the future, the Board does hold a 90-day termination ability on the lease. This is a nominal ground lease, and the county has no additional responsibilities beyond providing the premises to the tenant. So there's not really anything that we do out there. I'm happy to answer any questions the Board has.
I'm assuming the 500, up to $500 for water is for watering of the, of the garden kind of issue? And I'm real, I'm a little curious about how much money are we spending on that?
Well, that's sort of the problem. I'm not sure, I'd have to talk to Parks, I'm not sure we exactly know. And so the reason that's built into the lease is because we looked into sub-metering the property when the tenant originally took, you know, began their lease three years ago. If it was cost prohibitive, we were going to put that onto the tenant. And so what we said is, hey, Parks, watch your water bill. You know, if the spike's up, we can sort of identify that being the tenant's use. It's my understanding, after talking to Chris and looking at this new lease, there's no real concern with that. I'm not sure we could pinpoint exactly what they spend, but I don't think it's something that has been terribly concerning there.
Yeah, it's not much. He doesn't do any broadcast irrigation, it's all drip irrigation, and he's got water, you know, time waters and all this stuff. So it's, I would, it's not much.
Good. I think water, monitoring the water bill, looking for a blip in the watering months was a good strategy. If it's limited, that's good.
Yes, sir. It's clear to the tenant that if we do have these spikes, the spike is going to be their responsibility.
Very good. And then, let me just mention one thing about that, because there is an agenda item coming to you that's going to be adjacent to the lease you just considered, and it's going to be from the Horizons Residential Care Facility. If you remember, we didn't, there was an ARPA appropriation for an expansion there. They have actually provided a kind of where the, where that expansion needs to go, it does go outside their current leasehold, and so you'll be bringing that to, back to the Board to move that project forward here fairly soon. So you'll, you'll see that as it relates to this as well. And then Item 13 is a resolution authorizing lease agreement between Forsyth County and the State of North Carolina for lease at the 1450 Fairchild Drive facility.
All right. As background on this item, the county has previously, and really for many years, leased the North Carolina Forest Service 263.5 square feet of office space within the agricultural building, and that's of course located on Fairchild Drive. The proposed agreement leases the same space, which is essentially a large room and a bathroom, back to the North Carolina Forest Service for a three-year period at a rate of $10 a square foot. In the past, the Board has approved an operating rate for this lease due to the county's relationship with the North Carolina Forest Service. The proposed rental rate of $10 a square foot takes that same approach. As this is a full-service gross lease, the rental rate reimburses the county for maintenance, utilities, and insurance, as well as other similar services provided to the premises. I'm happy to answer any questions that the Board has. And I'll just quickly note, you do have a termination ability on that lease as well. Should our relationship with the Ag Building change into the future, and the Forest Service is aware of that?
Any questions for Kirby? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Agenda Item 14, oops. Agenda Item 14 is a tax matter. It's a resolution denying a refund request to the Tax Assessor Collector of the amount of $50,021.06 in Irish Page. With our tax office, we'll review this.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. After consideration and review of the request for refund of overpayment of property taxes as submitted to the Tax Assessor for 2017 business personal property taxes in the amount of $50,021.06, this office recommends the request be denied. We can confirm for the 2017 filing period, Forsyth County received a duplicate list, or duplicate listings, and payments from both the leasing and from the lessor for the same computer equipment. North Carolina Department of Revenue instructs, when a capital lease is involved, the leasing should list and pay the property tax. In this case, the leasing, which is the clearinghouse, the leasing is the clearinghouse, and therefore should not be refunded. Additionally, the allowance to refund under NCGS 105-381 is constrained to a five-year window. This request was filed after the allowable timeframe. Due to the above two conditions, Tax Administration recommends this refund request be denied. I'll be more than happy to address any questions that you may have at this time.
I have one. Help me understand it, because when I read this in the board materials, my first thought was, what's different about 2017 between 2016 and 2018? And help me, this is a, was this a purchase of, of technology, computer equipment? Tell me what, what happened to double bill? Tell me the difference again of why 2017 was this magic year, and what the duplicate payment was?
Absolutely. So we had the leasing and we had the lessor. So the lessor, which was the clearinghouse, or the leasing, I'm sorry, which was the clearinghouse, they were accountable for filing the equipment on their listing. Consequently, the lessor did as well. So we had the leasing and the lessor who both filed the equipment, although it was a responsibility of the clearinghouse to do so. So we had both listing the same equipment. That being the case, the lessor, which is the clearinghouse, because it was their responsibility to do so, is not entitled to the refund.
So the lessor, whoever that was, that with the equip, with the equipment that should not have, should not have filed, right, or whatever?
Correct.
Did they pay tax, did they pay taxes also?
Yes, sir.
So there really was tax collected twice on that tech, computer technology? Am I understanding that?
Yes, sir, because both of them paid, and only one was accountable for paying. Therefore, the refund is not due to the leasing.
I see, but the refund might be due to the lessor?
That is correct.
And did they claim it?
They have not done so to date, but should they decide that they, or, you know, they can certainly...
It sounds like the timeframe has expired.
It has. There's a five-year window, so they would have, have to have done it in 2022. So 2017 was the cutoff for the request, although the lessor, which is IBM, can certainly, you know, submit a request for the refund.
Gets a little more complicated, I thought. I hear you. Any questions? All righty.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Iris. All right, we have two added items. Item 15 is a resolution authorizing a second amendment to a loan to PCCI Land Incorporated. I won't read the rest of it. Kalani will come up, and he can review this item.
I'm going to pull up a presentation here and just...
Well, I should have read the whole thing then, shouldn't I?
I know the county attorney had been briefing this item. He is away. He is away, so I'm stepping in on that. He'd asked me to step in. So the item before you is a subordination request that has come from the developer of the flats at Peters Creek. I'm going to do a little bit of background on this and then describe what the request is before you. That is coming up a little odd. Looks like PowerPoint may have gotten lost in translation a little bit here, so I will do my best to summarize this. The Peters Creek Community Initiative back in 2019 requested that the county provide some support in the acquisition of parcel, the budget hotel, and for the acquisition of that parcel and demolition. The board did approve a $600,000 loan at that time for the acquisition and demolition of that property, and the loan was due and payable when PCCI acquired financing to construct new affordable units on that property, or April 30th, 2023. PCCI did seek low-income housing tax credits to fund the development of that new affordable housing in the site, and per the loan at that time, were going to build 18 units of affordable housing at 30% area median income households and 54 units at 60% household. They did move forward that. They also received city grants, as well as a grant from BB&amp;T and some private foundation funding as well. PCCI and their development partners had applied for those low-income housing tax credits, starting in 2019, and in 2022 were awarded $12 million in low-income tax credits. They were able to syndicate that through RBC Bank, which purchased tax credits on behalf of First Citizens Bank, which provided $10,323,886 in equity towards that project. There still was a gap as the budget was, or the cost of that project was estimated at $16,374,369. So they further received a $1 million loan from the City of Vansalem, as well as a $2.17 million grant, and a permanent loan from Centurion Community Capital for $2.65 million to close the gap. They also came to the county and requested that the county forgive the $600,000 loan that was originally used to purchase and demolish that property. Back in June of 2023, this board voted to forgive that original loan, but contingent on the developer actually delivering those affordable housing units, the number of units had changed at that point to 62 units. You can see on the screen, there were a certain number that needed to be available for 30%. So that was five one-bedroom and 11 two-bedroom units, and then 13 one-bedroom for 60% area median income and 33 for two bedrooms for 60% area median income. And that, as part of the action, the county actually did place restricted covenants on the property, outlining that the 16 units must be there for the 30% and the remaining for the 60% AMI for 50 years. The county's amended loan from that action has remained in first position on the property until forgiven, which would have been when those, which is when those apartments would actually be put in place. So the developer now has requested that the county subordinate...
Kyle, do you mind going back just real quickly? Because I do think it'll help. If you can talk to that table in the top that basically shows, because that table at the top really does show what the tax credits and the other revenue results in, in terms of what tenants pay. I think that'll be helpful, and then maybe just explain what that other table is.
Absolutely, yeah. So that top chart there is actually the rents that are going to be charged, are proposed to be charged to tenants at the flats at Peters Creek. Essentially, you can see on the far right, the FMR is the fair market rate. That's determined by HUD. So at a fair market rate, the wood bedroom apartments would rent for $936 a month, and two bedrooms would rent for $1,110 a month. Because of the subsidy from the low-income housing tax credits, as well as the city and county funds in this, those rates would be lower. So for a one-bedroom apartment, for someone, a household at 30% AMI, that rent would be $458. Likewise, for a one-bedroom at 60%, $917. Two-bedroom at 30%, $551. Two-bedroom at 60%, $1,101. So lower than that fair market rate. So essentially, what the subsidy is doing is decreasing those rents. Below that is a chart that shows HUD's determination of what the income is per household size of a 30% AMI household and 60% AMI household. That's important because essentially, to rent that apartment, you would have to income qualify there. So if a three-person household wanted to rent a 60% AMI bedroom, two-bedroom apartment, they would have to make no more than $44,040 annually. So that apartment can be rented to someone, a three-person household that makes that money or less. So once again, that subsidy is really restricting these rents to meet those income levels. So the current request from the developer is for the county subordinate its loan position to No Hotel LLC, which is the developer on the project, that holds a ground lease on the property, and has indicated that that is necessary to acquire financing to move forward with the construction of the property. This would not subordinate the restrictive covenants required, requiring the property remain affordable for 50 years. The developer has also requested an extension for completion of the units from July 1st, 2025, to October 31st, 2025. They've communicated that there are significant penalties if they go past that July 1, 2025, but in order to have some flexibility, they had requested that extension. And so that is the item that was, is before the board for consideration. Happy to answer any questions.
The North Carolina, what's it called, the financing?
North Carolina Housing Finance Agency does administer those tax credits.
Housing Finance Agency. And I don't know, I don't know how long that's been in existence. Has that been a...
Long time, yes, sir. I'm not sure the exact dates, but as long as I've been here, and much longer than that.
I'd be curious if they have ever had a project that defaulted and was unable to be completed.
I don't have that answer yet, but I'm happy to reach out to them and get that answer for you.
I mean, I think that, I think what our concern is related to risk. I mean, it's related to what is our, at this point, from the last action we had on this matter, the forgiving of the $600,000 loan upon completion, which was the intent to be, if we're going to be into this, we want the affordable housing to happen, and not, and that was kind of the idea of a carrot and stick, if you will, to do that. I do understand the issue of the loan itself that's being provided, and the request for it being the first position and payoff. So our risk in order to have it is simply whether or not it gets done, and I'm assuming that the approval process and the vetting done by the Housing and Financing Agency for the state, basically, if they've never had one forfeit, default, then there are a pretty good chance this one will probably make it. Because I guess there are, I guess the people who bought that, as I understand, just from the information you have shared in the past, is that, is that they're basically getting the tax credit piece and paying something like 86 cents on the dollar of the 12 million approval. They're going to get the advantage of that, plus a bunch of, there's several, what, three different ways there's a tax advantage to the investor. And I guess it's a big issue also for them if there's a default, because it disrupts their tax, basically, if you will, credits, you know, process and so forth. So I think for me, it's whether it's about the risk, and if the risk is low, and we've already agreed on kind of what were mechanics of the issue, that I'd probably, I'd probably be okay with that. But I'd like to, if there've been five defaults in the last whatever, then I'd be a little more, gets my attention a little differently. So I don't know, other questions for Kyle?
Just to confirm information that I thought I understood coming in earlier. The tax credit investor doesn't actually start getting the tax advantage until the units, as the units go into use. So they have every incentive to push as hard as anybody to get the project completed on time and on budget.
Yes, sir, that is correct. And that, what the penalty I talked about earlier really is instituted by that investor because they do have a timeline by which they want all those units to be in place.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, I do have a few questions and comments as well. This has given me a bit of anxiety. Nevertheless, I do know the importance of affordable housing and the needs in Forsyth County. With that being said, I do have questions regarding the developer's fee. Is that going to be paid on the back end? Or when is that going to be paid? And then I saw that there was a shortfall, and where is that shortfall coming from?
Yes, ma'am. Great question. So the developer's fee is paid at the end of the project. According to their model right now, they are $230,484 short planned. That would come from the developer's fee. If there are overruns, that would also come from the developer's fee. So that's why the developer's fee is paid at the end. Basically, that's your flexibility beyond the contingency that's already planned into that budget. The developer, if the budget goes over, then the developer loses more money.
I like the design, but again, I just wanted to be for the record that I want to see this manifested because I'm physically responsible for the dollars in this county. So thank you for allowing me to share.
And just, will you go back to that slide, please? The developer's fee is $930,000, correct?
Yes, ma'am. And that was set by the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency.
Other questions? All right. If you could check on that one thing that we could hear next week, that'd be great.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Last item is the second reading of an ordinance granting a non-emergency ambulance franchise within Forsyth County to Medex Medical Transport Service Incorporated. It's just a matter that that item does need a second reading, and so we will take care of that next Thursday. And Mr. Chairman, other than that, that's all I have, unless you've got questions.
Chairman?
Yes.
EMS director, come forward, please.
Good afternoon.
And as the conversation had gone on in regard to the new service for transport or franchise, tell me, with the people that are here now, what their general schedule is for non-emergency transport during the daytime? Like 7 to 8 o'clock to start, or maybe 5 or 6 to stop? Is that a general operating time for the convalescent transport, not to do with emergency transport?
I understand what you're asking me. You're asking me what the normal workday is, start to stop, for the two franchise services that we have?
For the, just the convalescent-type transport?
So I don't, I can't speak to the exact times of their operation, but I know that most hospitals aren't going to discharge patients overnight, and that we use them around the clock from a 911 perspective.
Well, it...
I don't want to speculate.
Yeah, I believe they did actually provide a shift schedule and staffing. I know I saw it from at least one of them.
It was on one of those handouts that we received, and what the handout was, was showing the number of runs they made in various hour times. Because what they were showing was where there were idle, where there were hours that there were no transports made. So in my recollection of that, I do remember the end of it. I don't remember where it started, at 8:00 or whatever, but I remember it went to 8:00 PM at night.
Yes, sir. So I remember that.
It went to 8:00 PM, and then in one of the, and in one of the days, it was like a series of what happened on this day, this day, this day, this day, they actually went home at 7:00. There were no, nobody was called, they had nothing scheduled, and they went home at 7:00.
Right.
But their chart ended at 8:00 PM, and I think started at 8:00 AM. But I don't think that's their, that's just when they were trying to demonstrate how many times they had no transports in an hour, in an hour period, or blocks of time that they were not working, but yet they had someone there available to work.
Yes, sir.
Was part of that, part of that deal.
I think that's a safe assumption.
Yeah. Well, I was just trying to understand better their schedule for that transport, not to do with emergency, but the convalescent types during the day. There was just conversation both ways, and I was trying to...
I think they're building their schedules, from my experience and what I did before, we built our convalescent, we built our ambulance schedule staffing based on the appointments that we received for, from the hospitals, based on patients that they had lined up to be discharged. And so that might start at 6:00 AM. It might start at 8:00 AM. It probably didn't start any later than 8:00 AM, but anywhere between 6:00 and 8:00. And then sometimes the last ambulance or two didn't, didn't go off the clock, if you will, until 10:00 or 11:00 at night. It just depended on where they were coming from and where they were going to, as to what the working hours, if you will, of the service overall would be.
Well, as far as, it just seems to me that that's for some of the, based on the conversation that I've heard, would have all heard. I'm just trying to understand the situation better. There's no restriction from the county in any schedule or hours that they need to provide for just convalescent transport. Now, we got the restrictions about the EMS, what they got...
You are correct.
The emergency. We got that.
Yes, sir.
But the other part of it, we don't have any restrictions. They can do however they want.
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Let's see it.
Fantastic.
Anything else?
Oh, you finished?
I'm finished.
Okay.
Yes, I was just asking if there are any other comments.
Okay, not for this. I don't have any more questions for you. I just wanted to say that we had a stepping-up graduation this morning. We had four folks who graduated, and it put a sunny spot in a rainy morning. They were so pleased, and we were so proud of them. It was a great morning, and I'm grateful that we can provide this for these citizens.
Well, thank you for sharing that. In fact, it reminded me, I was on a webinar yesterday, there were quarterly meetings of the Piedmont Tribe Regional Development Corporation, and they were talking about basically some readiness levels, environmental issues, and communication. And they highlighted Forsyth County, and mentioned particularly, our library system was a key part of the communication piece in this. There was three, I guess Forsyth Tech Library and one other. So it was another nice compliment and shout-out to our library system.
Anything else? I've got a motion to adjourn.